Good evening, welcome to City Council meeting of Wednesday, November 18th, 2015. Can I have the roll call, please?
Salem Derby.
Present.
Daniel Hagan.
Present.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
Joseph McCoy.
Here.
Daniel Rist.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie. Nathan Ziegler.
Present.
Okay, we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of November 4th.
So moved.
Motion, a second approval of the minutes, November 4th, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any abstentions? One abstention? And no opposition. Public speak time, is there anyone here from the public who would like to address the council with something other than what's on the public hearings? Not seeing anyone. We have no communications.
Do you want to do this, Jen Hayes?
Oh wait, Counselor Hagan's going. Okay. No correspondence, mayor communications, anything, Mayor Cadger? Oh wow, we're moving right along. Rules of government relations, Counsel Rist.
I have no report this evening.
Okay. Counselor Hagan.
Finance, our next, we're not going to have a subcommittee meeting next week, so our next subcommittee meeting will be December 9th. And tonight, I would like to set a few public hearings for the December 2nd meeting. The first one in the form of a motion is to amend the city ordinance for classification and pay plan under Exhibit B.
Are we doing it separately?
Just that one, and then I'll do the separate.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, set a public hearing for December 2nd, for the amendment classification of Plan Exhibit B, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
And then I'd like to set the following three public hearings for supplemental appropriations, that'd be the $16,000 for a 1.5% pay plan employee increase, $42,692 for a marked line cruiser for the police department, and $76,000 to replace two fire department vehicles, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second, to set public hearings for December 2nd, for the just previously read supplemental appropriations, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
And so what we'll be taking up at our next finance meeting, unless the mayor has new appropriations, which he may at some point, the next one, would be mainly the request by the retirement board to add stipends to their board members.
Okay.
And that concludes finance.
Okay, thank you. Public safety, I think we're back to you, Counsel Hagan.
Under public safety, the first thing I'd like to do, Counselor Hayes would like the city council to request that the public safety committee add the Paul Street Extension request for street acceptance back onto the agenda, she had removed it earlier, but we now have gotten a lot more information back from the planning department, and she wants to put it back on the agenda.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second, to put back on the agenda the Paul Street Extension request acceptance, additional discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
And also, I'd like to set a public hearing for the adding of no parking area on Industrial Parkway, that was heard at the last public safety meeting, and we'd like to set a public hearing to discuss that recommendations at the December 2nd meeting also.
Answer, second?
Check it.
Okay, a motion, a second, to set a public hearing for the no parking area on Industrial Parkway, additional comments, questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
And then the last item remaining on public safety is on-street parking on sections of Pleasant Street, I think this was brought by some of the mill owners, and I think we did have a general discussion on it, and I think it's a good idea, but it was a little more than I think the committee felt they could do in committee, and so I think Counselor Hayes is going to request input and recommendations from the planning board, the public works, and the police department, and when those recommendations come back, try to devise a plan that would make sense for all involved.
Okay.
And that's it for public safety.
Okay, concludes appointments, Counsel Smith.
Oh, can I have the list of, thank you. The appointment subcommittee met this afternoon, and we have a number of names to push forward through the whole council, so I'd like to make a motion for the council to consider these mayoral appointments. It's a long list, so I've been told I'm going to go ahead and go right through each of them. Do you want me to do?
Yeah, just because the dates vary on some of them.
Do you want to make a separate motion for each of them, or just list all of them in one motion?
All together, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, nope, not all of them. Okay, we move that the following positions be recommended for appointment approval for consideration by the entire city council, James Valen Court for the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership with a term expiration of 12/31/18, Betty Burnham also for the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership with an expiration of 12/31/18, Michael Sarwix for the Aquifer Protection Committee and for the Barnes Aquifer Committee, both with an expiration date of 12/31/18, Peter Davies for the Board of Assessors with an expiration of 12/31/18, Laurel Pelis for the Board of Health with an expiration of 12/31/18, James Brown for the Board of Public Works, 12/31/16, Karen Cadger for Charity Funds Committee with an expiration of 12/31/18, John Fitzgibbons, the city attorney, with an expiration of 12/31/16, Linda Talbit, Council of Aging Director, with an expiration of 12/31/18, Cynthia Stefan with the Commission on Disability with an expiration of 12/31/18, Jane Sekowitz for the Contributory Retirement Board, 12/31/18, John Phillips, Council of Aging, Thomas Brown, Council of Aging, Gordon Pilgrim, Council of Aging, and Carol Laberte, all of those with an expiration of 12/31/18, Andrew Hunter to the CPA Committee for a term expiration of 12/31/18, Carol Abby Smith to ECA Plus, Doris Madsen to ECA Plus, and Theodore Perch to ECA Plus, all with a term expiration of 12/31/18, Michael Sarwix to the Historical Commission with an expiration of 12/31/18, James Boyle to the Housing Authority with a term expiration of 12/31/20, Diane Kubasek with the Main Street Cemetery Commission with an expiration 12/31/18, John Bader, the Manhan Rail Trail Committee, Beth Sanderson and Elizabeth Sturgeon also on the Manhan Rail Trail Committee with term expirations of 12/31/18, Robert Vardy, Parks and Recreation Commission, 12/31/18, Robert Hitpold, Parks and Rec- no, I'm sorry, Ronald Hitpold, Parks and Recreation Commission, 12/31/18, John Sheehan, Parks and Recreation Commission, 12/31/16, James Zarvis for the Planning Board, 12/31/18, Jesse Belcher-Timmy for the Planning Board, 12/31/18, Barry Small for the Systems Administrator, 12/31/18, James McMahon Jr., Veterans Council, 12/31/18, Thomas E. Gallivan, Veterans Council, 12/31/18, Alan Sturgis, Veterans Council, 12/31/18, Kevin Miller, Veterans Council, 12/31/18, Linda Bush, Zoning Board of Appeals, 12/31/18, and John Antwater, Zoning Board of Appeals, for 12/31/18.
Mr. President.
You want a second?
I would like to ask a question of the mayor before we second the motion, before the motion's on the floor, and therefore she couldn't speak.
Eric Cadger, do you mind coming to the?
John Fitzgibbon, city attorney, why only a one-year appointment? It's probably an easy answer, but I don't remember why.
That's the way it's set up in the charter.
Only one year?
Yes, and as you recall, we did a change a while back, that was the way that all the inspectors were set up too, and councilors changed that, but the city attorney is still one year.
Yeah, I remember debating it, okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Well, second the motion now.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Any other questions or comments, counsel, about any of these appointments? Okay, not seeing, so, all those, that was made a motion, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. Counsel Smith, if you might just move in the new business, since where we have some appointments.
What? Oh, I thought you said move your business elsewhere. I'm here, I'm staying.
Move your business elsewhere.
Okay, hold on. Okay, now I'd like to move, we have six mayoral appointments to be moved to, I make a motion to move these to the Appointment Subcommittee for consideration, Sage Franatovich for the Agricultural Commission with a term expiration of 12/31/18, Russell Brain, Agricultural Commission, 12/31/18, Marie Fiat, Council of Aging, 12/31/18, Elaine Wood, Nashwannick Pond Committee, 12/31/18, Donald Vorson, Parks and Recreation Committee, 12/31/18, and James Ramsey, Register of Voters, 12/31/18.
Second. Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? And just probably?
We're moving them to appointments.
Right, so you want to maybe set an appointments meeting for the December 2nd?
Our next appointments meeting will be on December 2nd at 5:30 in Conference Room A downstairs, if it's available.
Okay, great.
And that concludes my report.
Ordinance, Counsel Derby.
Mr. President, we have no report tonight.
Okay. Property, Counsel Ziegler.
Thank you, Mr. President, we have no report tonight.
Okay, and pending business, we're still continuing collecting names for the boardwalk, and we went through new business, so I think we'll just, two-minute recess until we open public hearings at 6:15. We open the public hearings. Is there a second?
Second.
Somebody say second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. Public hearings, Counsel Hagan.
Yes, we have four public hearings tonight, and they're all supplemental appropriations. And the first one, I'll do a second reading, is dated October 15th, 2015, request is hereby made for the following appropriation, the amount requested is $18,000 to be appropriated from free cash in that amount and appropriated to the fire department capital budget to provide funds to purchase protective clothing for the fire department. This is, we've had this in the past, and again, I'll have the chief come up, he can explain it better, but at one point, they bought protective clothing out of a grant, I believe, for the entire department, and now, under training regulations, they can't train if they're 10 years old, so unfortunately, they all came due at the same time, so as we get new officers, he has to replenish them, but the chief can explain.
Good evening, Counsel Hagan is correct, in 2004, Chief Croak received a federal grant to equip all the members of the department with turnout gear, head to toe, from boots to helmet. It was great, saved us a significant amount of money. Problem is, the NFPA, who sets the standard for all of the equipment we use, changed their standard about five years ago, and said after 10 years, you can't use this gear for live-fire training. I can see their point if we were Springfield or Boston, but in 10 years, our gear doesn't see the abuse to make it unsafe. So that currently, there are eight firefighters that have gear that's more than 10 years old, they cannot participate in any live-fire training at the Fire Academy. We just had a class that was scheduled for here at the beginning of summer, had it canceled because we couldn't put enough people in the class because their gear didn't meet it. The request you have before you is to purchase eight sets, unfortunately, the manufacturers must know what our fiscal years are, because there was a cost increase July 1st to these gear on the statewide contract that we use, so one of the ways to try and get more out of this is we're switching vendors, we're buying different branded gear, a little more cost-effective, so there's going to be eight sets of gear that'll be purchased out of this, and you can see it, this is just for coat and pants, this isn't helmet, gloves, boots, so it's not a cheap ensemble. The good part is that the, these are the last eight, there's only one remaining set of gear, which is mine, and I really don't need to go to live-fire training, and I can replace that out of next year's budget. I have four sets that I purchased out of this year's budget to knock this, you know, keep this amount down, so this will get the last eight firefighters in gear that's newer than 11 years old now, and allow them to participate in live-fire training at the state.
Okay. Any questions for the chief? Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, I need to say.
I remember, I was just looking back over the appropriations we've done in the past, and I know that in January of 2014, so 11614, we had approved 6,500 for new gear for firefighters, and I was just wondering how this differs from that.
More expensive.
Okay.
And that 6,500 was for new part-time employees.
Okay.
Luckily, they're all full-time now. One of the things I started doing, when we hire somebody, instead of sending them in the basement and getting them old gear, we've been giving them new stuff.
Okay.
So what this will do, unfortunately, I have five part-timers that'll be starting probably the first of the year, who aren't, I don't have that luxury, because there's just not enough money to equip them, but total, right now, we have 30 sets of gear, and this finishes, I said the last eight of them, but we've been picking away, I think I get $5,000 a year to purchase all fire equipment, and it, over $2,000 a set I can't buy, so in, I think that was FY13 that we did the 6,500, and that was to try and get us a little closer, knowing that they were coming to the end of their life.
Okay, so this isn't replacing those ones, this is an addition to those?
No, no, the last eight remaining sets are all original to 2004.
Okay.
Okay. Any additional questions? Okay, thank you, chief. Is there anyone here from the public? Would I address the council? Not seeing anyone. Counsel Hagan.
I'll make the following motion, that the East Hampton City Council approve the supplemental appropriation, the amount of $18,000 from free cash and appropriated to the fire department capital to purchase protective clothing for the fire department.
Second.
A motion, a second, for supplemental appropriation of $18,000 for the fire department capital, additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Our next public hearing tonight, and in fact, the next two, will involve the water and sewer departments, or maybe there was just the water department, I guess both water and sewer. Our first one is a supplemental appropriation, I'll read the, I'll do a second reading, dated October 15th, 2015, request is hereby made for approval of following appropriation, the amount requested is $50,000 to be appropriated from retained earnings, and that amount, $50,000, appropriated to the wastewater treatment capital project, $50,000, the amount requested be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for the True Heart Drive and Adam Street pump station improvements. Director Pachinski's here, can speak to these, I believe these are upgrades, a lot of electrical work, and I know one of them is indoors, we now have to move it outdoors, or redo the whole building, or the station, but go ahead.
Yeah, good evening. We have 18 pump stations around town that we, that's used to pump the wastewater till it finally gets to the wastewater treatment plant. These are high-maintenance structures, a lot of, a lot of moving parts inside. At Adam Street, we have an electrical control panel that's pretty much rotted out, but we can't change it inside unless we go to what's called an explosion-proof panel to meet code. So we have, a lot of our pump stations have outside panels with, that are vandal-proof with metal boxes, so what we're going to do is mount this on the outside, so it's a little cheaper than doing the explosion-proof inside, so that's one of the things we want to do, is we have to change that electrical panel. We also have to replace the control panel at True Heart, we have a pump station at the end of True Heart Drive, and also, we need to replace the pumps in those buildings too, so this will give us a chance to get into those buildings and bring them not only up to code, but make sure that they function the way they're supposed to.
Okay, any questions for the director while he's here?
Just one, I didn't ask you this, the subcommittee meeting didn't come up, if one of these pump stations goes down, does the system, I mean, I assume it continues, I mean, you know, say you had a pump just blow out, and do you have time to put a new one in, or is it, does it reroute it? I'm just kind of out of curiosity.
Well, in all these pump stations, there's a minimum of two pumps, so if one pump goes down, then the other one can continue to pump. If the electricity goes down, some of them have standby power, if they don't have standby power, we have power on a trailer that we pull up, and we've got to plug in and continue to pump, but...
So there are contingencies.
There's a lot of contingencies, we haven't had anything bad happen so far, and we're hoping that by replacing these pumps, motor control panels will still be in good shape.
Thank you.
Okay, additional questions to the director? Okay, not seeing anyone. Thank you very much, director, anyone from the public? Not seeing anyone. Counsel Hagan.
I make the following motion, that the East Hampton City Council approve the following supplemental appropriation of $50,000 from retained earnings and appropriated to the capital project for the wastewater treatment, so that we can upgrade, provide funds to upgrade the True Heart Drive and Adam Street pump station improvements.
A motion, a second, supplemental appropriation of $50,000 for the True Heart Adam Street Pump Station improvements, any additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Our third public hearing tonight also involves the Public Works Department, and this is a second reading of the supplemental appropriation dated October 15th, request is hereby made for approval of following appropriation, the amount requested is $50,000 to be appropriated from enterprise retained earnings and appropriated to the Water Enterprise Capital Project, and that amount, $50,000, the amount requested be used for the following purpose, to provide funds to purchase replacement water meters. For all the council members, this is one that comes up pretty much every year, this is going to a radio, again, I'll let the director speak more specifically to it, but we're switching over from where the reader had to go in or read it outside on a thing, he can go by with a radio device to read them.
There's about 5,800 water meters in the city, and we probably have a little over 20% that are not radio-read yet, so we physically have to either go into the cellar and read it, or read it with an outside reader, where you plug the thing in and look at the number and write it down. The outside, the radio read is obviously much faster, before it would take us an entire month to read a section, we're seeing now we can read that entire section in maybe three or four days. It also saves time in the office, when that information comes into the office, it's downloaded in the computer, and it, the bills are generated, before that was all, had to be manually entered, so there's a lot of time savings there. And the big thing is, it ensures that we are billing for what we're actually pumping, and that's, that's our cash register, that's what makes the enterprise funds do what they need to do, is by charging for what we're, what we're pumping, we need to know, and we need to get accurate readings, and we need to get accurate accounts.
Okay. Counsel.
I'll go ahead.
I just had a quick question, I'm not sure we talked about this in the subcommittee, but the average life expectancy of a water meter, of the vintage we're buying today?
We've had some that are in the system for probably 25 years, which is too long, and we've had some that, after five years, they go, but the average, I would say if it goes 10 or 15 years, then it serves its purpose.
Counsel Hagan?
Just to clarify for the public, there's two parts to these new ones, right, there's the meter itself and the reader, so I don't assume they always go at the same time, because I know we never, we haven't replaced them all, we've go back sometimes, right, and have to do some of the readers, or the radio, have we done that?
Yeah, that's correct, is the actual physical meter itself, which sends a signal to the radio head, and that has a battery in it, so that battery in that radio head may go well before the meter does, so instead of spending $250, we only have to spend another $125 to change that head out, the radio read head, but the meter will continue to function normally, or continue to function the way it should.
And these services are all free to the, free to the public in terms of, they pay for it with their water.
They pay for it with their water, so when we call and make an appointment for them to change their meter out, it doesn't cost them anything, other than a little bit of their time.
Thank you.
Counsel Rist?
I'm curious, you mean the water meters inside everybody's home?
Yes.
Because mine's 30 years old, and I don't think it was ever replaced, so this is curious.
What, what address is that?
Think you need a new one.
Well, we always say...
It's been in like a top.
Well, I just got a new water bill, so I wonder.
We always say meters are like people, as they get older, they slow down, so we don't like old meters, because they don't, they don't read accurately.
You don't have to replace mine.
Any additional questions, director? Anyone from the public? No? Okay, Counsel Hagan.
I'll make the following motion, that the full city council approve the supplemental appropriation of $50,000 to be appropriated from retained earnings, and that amount appropriated to the Water Enterprise Capital to provide funds to purchase replacement water meters.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second, for supplemental appropriation of $50,000 to replace water meters, additional comments, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Thank you. Our final public hearing tonight is one we like, this is a supplemental appropriation dated October 15th, 2015, request is hereby made for approval of following appropriation, the amount requested is $150,000 to be appropriated from free cash in that amount and appropriated to capital stabilization, $150, the amount requested be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for the capital stabilization fund, I know the mayor's here, can speak to it, this was a fund, I believe, has just been in effect one year since Mayor Cadger took over, and it provides a second, we still have our original stabilization, and this is just for capital improvements, but if you're okay, mayor, you know, so this is just usually, but I can say is, follow-up, that if everything's approved tonight, including this, and the stuff that's on our agenda, the finance director and the mayor gave us, the finance committee, the following figures, we'll still have $625,000 in the capital stabilization, $1,543 in the regular stabilization, $634,710 in free cash, and $687,828 in enterprise retained earnings, just so that the city is, hopefully, we don't have any major disasters.
Okay. Anyone from the public? Not seeing any, so Counsel Hagan, I guess, okay, a motion.
I'll make the following motion, that the East Hampton City Council approve the supplemental appropriation. appropriation of $150,000 to be appropriated from free cash and appropriated to capital stabilization, and that amount to provide funds for the capital stabilization fund.
Second. A motion, a second, for supplemental appropriation of $150,000, $150,000 from free cash to capital stabilization. Additional comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. Move the public hearings to be closed?
Second.
Motion, a second, to close public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
A motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? See you December 2nd. Nice to meet you.